Good evening. I'd like to call the Thursday, April, gosh, April, April the 19th, 2018 session to order. And at this time, if you'll stand for a moment of silence, pledge allegiance to Mrs. Hines. Amen. Ms. Hines?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time, Ms. Hines, would you read the mission statement, please?
Yes, sir. The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, attendance, please.
Ms. Allen?
Present.
Ms. Atkinson?
Reverend Fleming?
Present.
Mrs. Hines?
Present.
Mr. Lamb?
Present.
Reverend Patillo?
Present.
Dr. Whitaker?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Parent?
Here.
Eight members present, one member absent.
Thank you. Next item is approval of the agenda. You have had a copy of the agenda to review. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made. And second, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Ms. Hanamus?
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is discussion. It's the annual special education plan in Part B flow-through for 2018-19 school year. Dr. Bracy?
Yes.
And soon it's going to be?
Dr. Bethmore.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I know that our board members have copies, but is there any wanted needs? Okay. What you have in front of you in board docs is what we refer to as the special education annual plan. This is actually the annual plan for what would be school year 1920, and we refer to it as the 19 grant. For those of you who are not familiar, there at any given time, there are three of the special education grants open at one time. So we are currently operating right now with 17. Most of next school year is done with 18s. And we're actually kind of a year behind, if you will. There are a few changes from the one that was submitted last year, which is actually 18, to 19. And I provided for you a summary sheet if you will go to the 619 summary sheet, which is actually the bigger number. 619 are the smaller children. So 619 is what we fund our preschool program with, our early childhood special education program. And you will see that that grant is not very large. And the majority of both of these grants, by the way, 92 percent, is taken up in salary and benefits. So there's very little left over, but the bottom half of both the 619 summary sheet and the 611 summary sheet, share with you how the remaining funds will be used throughout the school division. The thing that is the most important for you all to note is that all of this, the annual plan and the summaries, are based on last year's figures, the grant we got in 18, because we have not been given next year's numbers yet. It's based on the enrollment, the December 1 count. And our December 1 count did go up by 24 children. That doesn't necessarily mean that we will actually get more funding. As soon as we get the correct funds, they adjust it. They do not make us resubmit, because our submission date is probably going to come this year before they send out the numbers. I did the summary sheets for both our 619 and 611, based upon our folks receiving a 2 percent raise. So I am hopeful that that's going to happen, but everything would be readjusted, and that would essentially mean more money to spend in the other categories. The workbook, the Excel workbook that you have, is the actual plan that is submitted, and that has been reviewed by our CAC committee, which we are required to do. And then when you all vote on it next week, it is now, then it will be submitted through the confidential submission omega system that the State Department uses. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
We still have the inter-agency agreement with the regional jail.
Yes, sir, we do, and that was renewed last year.
And how many students? How many?
Uh...
Many individuals?
It was three.
Three.
I am...I'm not confident to tell you that it's now two, but it started out the school year with three.
Okay. All right. Board members, do you have any questions regarding this grant? Okay. Next week, we will be voting on this. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Next item is for discussion, and that's the 28-19 budget. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. And the only update that I have regarding the budget, it doesn't necessarily affect the 18-19 proposed budget, but it's the $1 million that the city manager mentioned in her statement when she was presenting her budget for one-time security measures. So I did want to share with you all what we plan to do with that $1 million. And the plan is to purchase two-way radios for all of our schools. We plan to install new security camera systems within all of our elementary and two of our middle schools. The one middle school, we will apply for the grant for. I think it starts in August, we'll apply for a grant. The next item we will do, we will provide security stations. As you know, we're looking at school security officers to be in each school now, so we want to make sure that we have a station up front as you enter the building, so that as soon as you walk in, you'll see a security uniform, security officer, not SRO, present that will meet and greet. And also at that station, the last piece that we plan to purchase is a visitor management program. When someone enters, you give them your license, they'll run it through, and it'll do a quick reference background check on the individuals that are entering the building. So with those four items, that should definitely take care of that $1 million. So that's our plan, to spend those funds. Any questions regarding that?
Do you have any other?
No, nothing else on the proposed budget?
Okay. I noticed, I think that Mr. Lamb has been sending questions regarding the budget. Those are very good questions. I guess I just wished, I guess my confusion is that I wish that we could have gotten those questions, the information that you requested from Superintendent and his staff before we voted on the budget. But they were very good questions regarding the budget. You asked very specific questions about the budget, and I thought that they were good questions. It would have been nice for us to have those questions, and we could have discussed them.
Chairman Parent?
I think there were good questions.
I asked questions before, just because I asked those questions after even going over the budget thoroughly. I mean, those questions can be even discussed now, if you wish. I mean, you've got a copy of those questions, I'm sure. The fact is, I mean, I asked them. I'll take the credence that the fact that they were good questions, and we can just, we can leave it at that.
Okay. No, I just thought that would have been nice for us to have those questions prior to the adoption of the budget, but then we'll also see what City Council will do, because we may have to revisit all of this budget again if we don't receive the funding that we've requested.
Well, I hope the questions will be beneficial in those discussions.
Yeah. I thought so. Okay? Yes?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Considering that the city manager's budget does not give us what it is that we've wanted, has staff begun to make a priority list of our budget so that we can give our teachers and our staff that raise? Is that going to be feasible at this time?
Well, that's something that Ms. George and I have started the dialogue with, because you know it's going to be a short turnaround time.
Correct.
Once we know exactly what the city's budget is. So we've already started having some discussion. We mentioned in our finance meeting to share with them that, you know, we are starting to identify some areas that we can take a look at, that we can come back in and present what we think the budget should look like. But right now, we're just in the exploratory phase of it.
Okay.
We don't have anything at this point, because it's sort of trying to look and pick and choose, you know, it's a process.
Correct.
You know, we're kicking it around with our senior staff meetings as well, so that we make sure that we make the proper recommendation to you all.
Have you heard anything from Richmond, any rumblings out of Richmond as to what's going on up there as far as the state budget is concerned?
I haven't.
Because that's the other unknown.
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, because depending on which bill, which budget gets passed, we're looking at either an increase or a decrease. So that truly affects us as well.
And that's a large gap.
We're, I just want everybody to understand that we're between a rock and a hard place, because where we sit, all of our money is questionable at this point. We have no idea what is coming to us. So I just, my number one concern is raises, because I think at this point, we're looking at, we're the only seven, we're the only city in the seven that's not even in a city manager's...
Correct.
...for our school budget. So I just want to make sure that we can remain competitive and retain and possibly recruit. So my priority is always going to be keeping us on level ground or better with our salary.
Right. I think we're all in agree, I think we're all are in agreement with that. Ms. Williams?
I did get a call from Penner to Lucas before I came here, and they did not vote on a budget today. They were not able to come together, so they have to go back. They've scheduled another session for April 28th. So they still have the...
Well, when we had our finance meeting, Reverend Patillo and I, finance meeting Monday, what Ms. George gave the finance, and what, these are only projected, rough projections that she was able to obtain. The, of course, we're waiting to get the ADM as of March 30th. That has not been finalized. But the projected state funding shortfall, according to her preliminary figures, is going to be somewhere around $900,000 to $975,000 from the state. But that's all very preliminary. The federal impact aid money is going to be somewhere around $120,000 shortfall. So those are very preliminary. You asked the question, she did present that, and so we'll just see how, you know, everything is kind of like a question mark, but that's kind of like she's looking at her crystal ball and seeing what can be and what can happen. But that's a rough projection, so.
I want to go back to the previous item. The background check?
Yes.
So is that for everyone who enters a public school?
Yes.
Okay. So people don't have any right to privacy. Like, who's going to have access to that information once it's scanned?
Yes.
The system that we're looking at, and I'll have more details at our next meeting, I meet with a sales rep on Monday, but the system that we're looking at only scans a driver's license.
Right.
It takes that picture to put on your sticker, visitor's pass, so that people know that pass was assigned to you in particular. It includes an expiration time for that pass, so people know when you're expected to leave the building. And it only checks publicly available records. It does not go into any sort of disclosure situation. So it will do a quick check of publicly available sex offender registries.
Right.
And that's all. It's not a private background check.
Okay.
It's not a complete background check, and it shouldn't violate any rights.
Okay.
When I was telling Dr. Bracy, when I had an IEP meeting in Virginia Beach with my grandson, you know, I had to give him my driver's license, and they ran it through the, right before, I think that's the name of the software. And it only goes to the state police sexual abuse.
Okay.
And that's it. And then they print the label, and then when you leave, you give them the label, and they throw it away.
Okay.
Ms. Williams?
What about people that don't have a driver's license?
They can produce another form of identification.
Government ID.
Yeah. Well...
I think that's good, because that...
He said government ID. Right. And that's what he's talking about, you know. If you go to the school and you ring the buzzer, then, you know, they don't know what I've got. They can see.
Why they let everybody?
So they let people in. So if you've got a station where you, because I know when I went to the school system, I never got to the office. I got to the station, and they ran it, and then I was able to go on into the building. So I think it'll be, I think it'll be a very worthwhile advantage as far as safety's concerned, because I worried about it, too, by hitting just the buzzer, being buzzed in. Once you're in, you're in. You can do, who knows? But anyway, I think it's a good thing.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
The program, Mr. Parent, that you're mentioning, I went and spoke to the seventh-grade English class at Waters, and they wanted to talk about safety and security. And one of the students shared with me the Rapture Program.
He said, "Have you all thought about implementing this system?"
So when they presented it, and I started smiling, and then I shared with them, I said, "We're already looking into this type of system." So, you know, they were pleased to hear that.
Okay.
So I think it's right in line with what most of the school divisions that have that type of equipment are using.
Okay. Any other questions from board members? All right. Next item is school board policy. Dr. Bracy? And then that would fall into the committee.
You have the information.
Yes, sir. These are the policies that were introduced at the last meeting. We did not vote that night. It was just for discussion, but they're the same policies.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made. And second, do you have any discussion regarding any individual policy? There are a lot of different policies, but we know that they're checked with the SBA attorney, so we don't have to worry about that. And we're not creating any policies that we have not had our attorneys, okay? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Ms. Hanamus?
Thank you. All right. The agenda review for next week. Dr. Bracy?
Yes, sir. On the agenda for next Thursday, April 26th, we will have, in our early session, the closed motion, we will discuss, there'll be another discussion, though that's a placeholder for the proposed budget and for the 18-19 budget. And then Ms. George will give us a discussion on the 2017-18 budget. Moving to our open meeting, we have the students from John Tyler Elementary School that'll be visiting with us next week. Ms. Hines will give our mission statement, followed by the attendance and approval of the agenda. Ian will give us our student representative report. Item four, curriculum and instruction. Dr. Williams will have a presentation of students with the CNI report, followed by the electronic vote of the special education plan in Part B for the 2018-19 school year. Resolutions, we'll have Recognizing Teacher Appreciation Week, which runs from May 7th through 11. We will have the approval of our minutes, followed by public comment, non-agenda and board agenda items. Next, we will have our Human Resources and Operations Report, the regular month report for Human Resources and Operations, and then we'll have the electronic vote for the Employee Transaction Report for the month of April. Budget and planning, we have potentially a contract that may be placed on the agenda, followed by electronic vote for revised budget for fiscal year 2017-18, general fund, electronic vote for the budget for the month of March. Next, we will have superintendent's month report, board members' comments and concerns, and then we'll have our agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Next item, board members' report. Any board member, I know some of you went to the national convention.
Yes.
Williams, do you want to get some little highlight about?
Yes, of course. We had a wonderful time at the National School Board Convention, Dr. Bracy, Board Member Angela Allen, and Cardale Patillo. There were so many different workshops that you could really go to pick and choose. I did a couple on engaging the community, you know, putting out the positives about our school division and things like that. And it was one that I went to that was really interesting, that was enlightening for me as far as cyber security with board members. Because, you know, I go to a lot of schools, and, you know, you take pictures. I was at the volunteer banquet today at Hodges Manor, and the kids, you take the pictures, you put them up, but they did a thing on that, that we really should not be doing that, because they gave an example of one school division, they posted the kids' pictures on Facebook, and they got a call from Interpol, because, you know, the kid was supposed to be, like, hidden from the father or whatever.
Oh, no.
And then they saw the picture, and you don't really think of things like that.
Right.
And so that was very enlightening, so I'm just going to take pictures of the program in the future or something like that instead of, because the parents like seeing their kids up there, too.
Sure.
But you just never know about that incident when they don't want that to happen, and then the school division is liable. So that was interesting, and they did a lot of talking about the hacking and what security measures are being put into place in different school divisions and stuff like that. Now, all of the workshops are still listed on the website, the presentations on the NSBA website. So you can pick whatever and go through there.
Okay.
Because I did a lot of note-taking, but then I realized that they say you could really go on the website and pull them off. So it was a lot of interesting things. It's a great convention. I mean, people come from all over the country. So, and Dr. Bracy is always a wonderful host. He makes sure we have very nice dinner, and I think they went, "Did you all go see the Spurs later, San Antonio Spurs?" Yeah, they always find a nice game, and so it was very nice. It was very nice.
Where's next year's?
Philadelphia.
Philadelphia.
Oh.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so if anyone else want to talk, that was what I remember most.
The majority of the courses that I chose to partake in had to do with career and technical education and finding funding for all of them. So I do have a presentation that I'll provide for you guys next week.
Great. Reverend Patillo, do you have any comment?
Yeah, just a few brief ones. While I was there, I was able to meet with other regional chairs from across the country and our state, and they talked about collaborative, alternative behavior programs. So basically, when we as a district don't have funds to have our own alternative program, they have in other areas where they do collaborative programs between three or four cities. So it makes it cheaper on the school division, you also can provide services for the children also. And I also attended a workshop on school safety. Some measures are very extreme, and some are a lot less, but I'll have more information. I'll make copies to get everyone at our next meeting also.
We're not going to give, we're not going to give our teachers or our principals bats, are we?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Or rocks.
Yeah.
Didn't you see that on television? It was in...
Yeah, Philadelphia.
Yeah. I put the teachers all with those miniature bats.
Yeah.
Bobby, like, bobby sticks, almost, like...
Good. Thank you all very much, for sure. Any other reports? The next subcommittee, I've given you kind of a brief review, but Reverend Patillo, did you have anything to add that we need or needs to know about our finance meeting?
You stated the little bit we did cover. Only other things I know, we went over the current burn rate, which you all are getting in your finance packet at the next meeting, but we are ahead this year than we were last year as far as our burn rates we're spending at the budget we did last year.
We did have an HR committee meeting, Joseph and I...
I was going to check.
Yesterday.
All right.
But I think it has to be discussed in closed session if, what, the update, and I think the board probably would want to hear, did we need to go into closed to discuss?
Do you want to do it tonight, or you want to do it next week?
It's up to the board. We can go next week.
Does the board want to go into closed session to hear the report?
Next week.
Or you want to wait till next week?
It's a next week, we can put it up.
Okay. All right. The city council liaison, y'all have already met and reported. Corporate sponsorship, I don't know if that's alive or dead or...
As far as, as far as I know, the head athletic director, what's his name?
Pete.
Pete. Mr. Pete. Was there something said about him not wanting to continue with that?
No, I'm meeting with him.
You're meeting with him?
Yes, in regards to that.
Okay. All righty. So we have it then.
All right. Thank you. Curriculum and structure?
We meet on the 30th.
The 30th. We have our meeting the 30th.
30th, okay. Legislative policy, we've taken care of minority contractors. I know that Davis is, we're going to be, we're going to be having for Portsmouth Business, it was going to be early May, but now it's been moved to a new date.
July. July.
Yeah.
Yeah, we met in March. We met March 29th. We had our committee meeting, and there will be another community-type workshop on, I think it's July 19th is the tentative date.
Is this just for Portsmouth Business?
Right.
All right. Technology operations.
We met yesterday.
Yeah.
And I know briefly, they give a... And I know briefly, they give a updated report in our packet every meeting for summer projects, it's already lined up, they're going to be doing. And also, we're going to meet again in June to get a final review before we get out of the summer, what's going to happen during the summer, so we can give an update to the board in reference to that. Technology, you jump in when you want to. Technology is moving smooth. They've expanded the Z-Space programs now, is that all three high schools, and not just the, the one test module we're doing, so that's expanding, the children are loving that, and that's all I can remember.
Well, and also, what I took away from it, I, I was real pleased to see that there's a definitive plan about this security and safety measures, which has already been, you know, explained. That seems to be an ongoing thing, and I did learn a little bit about technology as well as it was explained with, just where we're going as a district.
Right.
You know, by what I understood and so forth, you know, we're in a completely different place than where we were even, say, five years ago.
Right.
And, and I think that's a positive. I mean, it's got its, it's got its drawbacks, but it's, it's also got its positives as well, so.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Slupin, do you want to announce to the board what your plans are for unveiling some new technology for the board members?
Sure. We've, I was waiting to see what was at the end of that.
I was just going to let you, let them know.
So we, we have, we received the iPad Pros. We've configured the iPad Pros, and we've got them ready. I'm going to be scheduling folks to come in, so we can, you know, get everybody comfortable and logged in, and everything set up with your iTunes account, so you can be productive and with your new devices, so. I think you're going to love them.
Okay.
They're pretty cool, so.
Plus the keyboard.
Yeah, it's the, yeah, so we have the, the cases for them and the, and the actual iPad Pro, so it's good stuff.
Okay.
And thank you, Claude Parent, for your recommendation on the, on the key, the keyboard and case combination. It's a great solution. It doesn't require Bluetooth to connect them.
No.
It uses something called smart connect.
It's hard, hard to last it.
So it makes it a lot easier. It's a lot easier than the other ones, so.
Ladies, you may have to buy your new bag if it doesn't, might give you an excuse to buy your new.
My bags are all big enough for everything I got to schlep.
Very good. It is five minutes after six.
I have one question. I want to go back to MWVE.
Sure.
With the July date, have, is there a way that we can work that in with Portsmouth Economic Development as well, so that as new businesses come onboard, Portsmouth EDA is aware of what it is that we offer, so as they onboard new businesses and they're looking for businesses, they know where to steer them within the city to get them on the registry as well?
I can, I can check with Glenn, Ms. Davis.
Okay. I just figure if we're going to promote Portsmouth businesses, we need to start with them as they come onboard and get them the right paperwork and start.
Another commissioner of revenue is working with her.
Okay.
All right. Last item on the agenda, this is kind of a, five minutes after six, something must be wrong.
Move for adjournment.
It's adjournment. There are, there's no other business to come before this great board? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
For adjournment.
For adjournment.
For adjournment.
For adjournment.
20th.